I'm ready. Ready to charge.
It sounds like a massive boom.
We're good on cart? We're good on cart?
All right, I'll call the Montesano City Council meeting to order for July 27th if you'd all rise for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask the clerk to per- the oath of office for Councilman Carl.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. Once we get that on. We've got one. I, Roland Carl.
I, Roland Carl.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
Of the office of the council position number five.
Of the position of councilman number five.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
And now will the clerk call the roll?
Here.
Councilwoman Cristobal?
Here.
Councilman Cope?
Here.
Councilman Skaramuka?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Approval of bills?
So moved.
Second. There is a motion and a second to approve the bills as audited. Is there any comments?
Question.
Yes?
On page three, the Ogden Murphy Wallace. One eight three eight four is listed as an ambulance fund expense. So how are we putting labor negotiations in the ambulance fund?
Under advisement of the state auditor's office, we're supposed to allocate collective bargaining costs to the appropriate fund. And so since it relates to the fire department, it gets coded to the fire department fund. Councilman Bryson?
So we had a total of $140,730.10. The largest bill this month was just over $30,000, Grace Harbor County Road Department for pre-leveling and tacking work for Ninth and Eleventh Streets.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
On page five. Item one eight three nine zero. The first two items are council communications and it says internet and phones. What is that covering? Sorry, I should have told you I had another one. Spared you the.
Costs related to broadcasting of city council meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Approval of bills carries. Approval of meds?
I have one suggested clarification. I don't remember where this is. But where it says that you recuse yourself from the vote, might be good to also clarify that you recuse yourself from the executive session.
So I hear you're making a motion with those changes in it?
Move to approve with those changes. Yes, that's what you heard.
Second.
There is a motion and a second with the changes from Councilman Wood. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're at our first public comment period. If anybody wishes to make a public comment? Yes. There was one comment submitted online and I will read that into the record now. From Carl Gugli Mina, which I would probably sure I messed that one up, but please consider entirely banning the use of fireworks within the city limits. Please have, people have long been disregarding the rules regarding the types of fireworks allowed and the timeframe from which they can be used. I've never seen police enforce the current laws in place. Our pets and hundreds of others are terrorized for days and before and after the holidays at all hours of the day and night. Let's make Montesano a sanctuary for this annual nightmare. Hearing no public comment, there is another opportunity. We will go to committee reports. Did any committees meet?
The city forestry committee kind of informally met yesterday to welcome Councilman Carl on board and to tour the city forest with the expert guidance of Forester Heiner. Present or Mr. Carl, Bryson, myself, and Mr. Heiner. It's great to see the work that's been done up there and to get a report from Lauren on the actions that have been taken to protect the forest and make sure it still continues to do its job for the city.
Thank you, Councilman Cope. Any other committees? Hearing none, we'll move on to committee assignments. In your packet, you would have seen the committee assignments. And whatever the council's pleasure is on the vacant positions. My suggestion would be that we fill in those positions with Councilman Carl at this time. Any objection to that from the council?
First ask if Councilman Carl has any specific committees that he would like to be a member of.
I don't have any particular desire for any of them. I think all of the vacancies would be appropriate, so I'm comfortable with that.
The only one I could see being a little bit overbearing would be the council of governments, which is sometimes a long enduring battle of a Thursday night, but we can, we can talk about that one on a later date as well.
I can do the alternate on that.
Yeah, I was there the other day for it too, so whatever.
Oh, you can do the alternate on that.
The pro temp should probably be the council of government.
Awesome.
Appointee. Do you have that one?
I'm, I'm good with that.
All right, so I'll take that. Yep.
On the ad hoc code review.
Yeah.
So Megan and I never got started on that, but I would like to, but so I need somebody to step in on that. I know that's a very exciting opportunity in that there may be a number of people vying for that.
I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Does this mean Carl will be on the parks board?
That's how I would assume if nobody, nobody has any objections to that.
Filling in the box here.
Any others that we've missed? All right, moving on to old business.
We need a motion on approving the.
Do we need one?
I think we did the original.
Well, I think I hear you making a motion.
That's what you heard.
Second.
Councilman Wood has made a motion to fill in the vacant positions with Councilman Carl with making a, the alternate vacant position for the Grace Harbor Council of Governments for Tyler Trimble. Any other discussion?
Ad hoc code.
And Clint Bryson to the ad hoc code review committee. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to old business and an annexation update. We're still in the process of working with the county, so there's no real update with that and working with Jenna and the boundary review board. That's your, your meeting update for that. We'll keep it on the agenda moving forward as well, so it's.
So what, on, on which particular annexation? I thought we had run into a stumbling block on the lack of code authorizing the requirement for signing away objection rights in order to receive extension of city water.
So on that issue, I'm working with Chris Coker. The other one is Wes Simpson in terms of timing. And so I've got a question over to Jenna and she's going to get an answer to me hopefully soon. They've had some turnover. Jenna, actually, they don't have anybody in her position. She changed to human resources and so she's trying to do both jobs now. Because as my point of contact with annexation, she's not filling that role anymore.
So absent the city code providing authority to require signing away the right to vote against annexation in the future, are we not premature to be before the boundary review board? Since.
We are not before the boundary review board at this point. I've got some preliminary questions before I send anything over to the boundary review board that I'd like answered.
I don't think we have authority to send it to the boundary review board if we haven't acted under authority of city code to require them signing away that vote in an annexation election.
Okay.
So I believe that should be resolved before it goes to the review board. So perhaps we should put that on a future council agenda for discussing whether we want to adopt that code.
Noted. Moving on to the fire department generator update. In your packet, you will see a quote for a generator that we are potentially looking at. And is there any questions in that? And I'll ask Chief Vance if he has any additional updates to that.
No, there is no additional updates. As I mentioned, the last council meeting. Waiting for ARP or waiting for a funding mechanism and we still need, we will need to go out to public bids, so it's just a process that the council and mayor give authorization. We are just in a whole length.
Can I just ask you a quick question? Is there, because this is for purchase, right? Is there any option to lease a generator without being a night?
I, you know what, I have not explored that, but I don't think that's actually, there is another option, which is, which I did explore, and it's the military surplus. Unfortunately, I think we are rolling the dice. I mean, it can, we can get one, a hundred K generator that can run. Unfortunately, we'd have to get it out of Alabama or, or Florida or some other military base and we have to get it shipped here. There's a costing to buy it, there's a cost to ship it, and we just don't know. So I think it makes better sense, and I know it's a lot of money, but I think it makes better economical sense to purchase brand new, have warranty, have it installed, and go that route. So as far as your question is to the leasing, I am not aware of that. It might be an option, but I'm not sure.
Okay, and this is to be installed. Where would it be installed?
Actually, the location that we've determined at this point is behind the fire hall. There's a, there's kind of like a parking pad behind the host tower section, which is also very, is adjacent to the control panel room where everything needs to be wired to. And so that's the location that we have identified. It's also in conjunction with Cascadia for gas, which would then be basically $0 to get the gas and the gas put there. So that's, we feel is the best option at this point.
Total number of bids that you've received in addition to this one?
We have, we have two. And really, I would probably go out for a third, but in all reality, going out to public bid, this gives us a really good ballpark figure. Both these bids give us a ballpark figure of where they need to be. So there's really no sense of either wasting someone else's time or our time. Really comes out of a bid and we'll get that and then for determination.
How long is, how long is this bid due?
It really doesn't matter because we have to go public. It really doesn't matter. And that was my fault. And I apologize. I apologize to the salesman. I had him come down and give me a bid. And after talking with Mike, the mayor, everybody, I real, you know, the cutoff is $60,000 per project. And so at that point, we had to put a public bid. So I have talked with him. I told him what a process is going to be. And he said, let me know when you guys put a bid and I will, I will go that route. So it really doesn't matter. Yeah.
It's, it's nice to have such a detailed description of what we're looking at though.
And I'm telling you, I was talking to Councilman Wood the other day. I really feel that this is a solid bid. Talking with Mike, he said there's usually a 5% up or down, you know, for incidentals or whatever it is. I really feel like this is a very strong bid and I think this is really going to cover what, I don't think it's going to turn into 150 or anything else. So I could be completely wrong and, but it is looking.
I, I think it would be probably better to view this as an estimate.
Yeah.
Rather than a bid, because we can't consider it as a bid.
That's correct.
But we do have, you know, the, the scope of work lined out here. How long does it take for the bid? You know, if we decided tonight to go to bid, how long would it take to, before we had bids back?
If we were to decide tonight?
It would probably take a week or so to put the documents together and then we have a mandatory bid period of 13 days.
So one whole month.
So I would like to move that we use this, we go to bid using the criteria listed in the scope of work.
I'll second that. There is a motion by Councilman Wood, second by Councilman Carl, to go out to bid for the fire department generator with the scope of work listed in the estimate that we have received. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion, Dan. I think you know that I support having a good generator in place and making sure that we have, that's, we've been fortunate not to have had an earthquake or some major event where we needed that as a, you know, a resource. Are you, from past discussions, I think you're looking at some of the funds that are going to become available to us as a possible funding source for this?
Yeah, but a bid doesn't obligate us.
I understand.
To spend it. But should the council decide to spend the ARP funds on this or spend other funds and then repay those with ARP funds, then we will be ready to go. And we have been talking about the need for a generator. I think it was in February when I first brought in my proposed list of ARP funds, which I've changed because you mentioned in that same meeting that we needed a generator. And, you know, I think in, in my mind, that went to the top of the list. And, you know, my understanding from talking to the chief is once we decide to do this, it's still four months before we get the thing in. And so I think the longer we wait, the more we're rolling the dice on, on being caught in an emergency. We're overdue for a Cascadia earthquake event, way overdue according to the experts. And if one happens, we're not going to be able to get people to community hospital or to Summit Pacific. And we will have to make a makeshift medical center at our fire department. And what we have right now is unreliable. It's fortunate that our staff have been able to repair it. But my understanding is you can open a bay door, you can run a light, you can run a phone, maybe a computer, but not all at once. And that building needs to be fully powered in an emergency event. And I just don't want to roll the dice anymore. So I think we should go to bid. Make sure that there aren't any delays in that bid. I mean, I, I'm glad to hear we can get the bid documents out in a week and then two weeks later, you know, have the bids come in. And then we can decide, are we going to use ARP funds? Are we going to front load it out of another fund and pay back with ARP funds? But after we make the decision, we're still, what did you tell me? Four months out from getting it in?
I think that the gentleman had told me that it was somewhere between 12 and 14, or 12 and 16 weeks to, to get where the generator would be. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pipe work. We can get everything wired, we can get the cat down, we can get everything hopefully done and cut for that. And then when that comes in and they can come and pop it down with the crane and run away.
And there have been some supply chain challenges with electrical parks.
Oh, yeah.
So we may find ourselves taking longer than we intend. Dan, I, I support the idea of using those funds for infrastructure, especially critical infrastructure the city needs. I think that's a really wise way to use those monies. I just wanted to talk about it so that we go into this eyes open.
Yeah, I just want us to be ready to move without delay. And going to bid puts us in a position to do that.
And I do like the specs that I'm seeing on this bid. The generator that's existing was never adequate for what we need. I don't, I don't think you'd ever build a building like that nowadays without having something comparable to what's proposed.
Like I said, that generator came from this building when it was.
It was an afterthought that was added in, but.
I believe that generator is older than Dave Skaramuka.
Wow.
I'm not sure.
Councilman Cope?
Chief, was this scope of work response to a specific request from you and from the fire department, or was this just something that this individual company offered?
Yes. He came to the fire department. We told him what we were looking for. We gave him two, there are two options, you know, 50 K to run 10 things, 100 K to run the entire building. We talked about having dual fuel and fencing and where we wanted it. He came up with what the scope of work was. I mean, he has the expertise. This company, if they hit the bid is a one stop shop. They have their own employees. They do it all. They do everything from the cement to the electrical, to the fencing, to the gas line, but all that stuff. The only thing we had to do outside of that would be Cascadia for gas. And that's something that I've already reached out to them. They give me a preliminary $0 because of the distance that it has to go. So, so yeah, this is what he told me after looking at the site, what he would need to do.
And it fills the department's needs in your mind?
Yeah, I really feel like it does. The max KW that the fire department had used, which we took with the PUD, was like 81 KW. And they asked us to go 50 to 20% higher than that, which is.
This does it.
So that's what we're running.
Okay.
So will, oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished? So will, will there need to be an electrician or an engineer to oversee the project or?
That's what this company does.
That, oh, that's.
It depends on who gets to bid and how they'll handle that.
They'll handle that.
This company, this company here, they have all that. They work with the PUD. They work, they, yes.
One thing I'm not seeing, and I'm sure it's here. This is, this will be a dual, LP is an option, right? So will there be a reserve tank on sites?
My understanding is there will be two LP 120 gallon tanks that will be there along with ballers to make sure that the PUDs are here and then they don't get hit. And it will be a dual fuel at Cascadia for gas. We have the earthquake gas out. It is the propane and the heat from the fire.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next in old business is the ordinance providing declaration of emergency allowing the mayor to ban fireworks upon use of the extreme fire danger to property or persons. Now that we have a full public safety committee, the public safety committee will meet with the chief and and potentially the forester and have a discussion on this considering all other. So it's on the agenda to keep it on the agenda and keep it on track. Any other questions or comments?
Only that I did see that one amendment had been made adding the city forester into the discussion or to the city staff. or to the, uh, city staff that would be consulted, uh, before, uh, an emergency ordinance was enacted or a temporary ban was enacted, uh, due to emergency, uh, conditions. And I think that's a, that's a good move to, to bring the forester in since that's, uh, one of the main motivations on this is to make sure that the forest and the forest land are protected.
Absolutely. So public safety committee, we will meet on that and we will get a date together to, to start working on that as well.
Uh, I have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
So we have received some comments from the public that I sure would like to get more. So let's keep pushing this issue out there. Because there's going to be more than one side to the story. And obviously people who don't like something are going to be motivated. But, uh, let's just make sure we have as much discussion in the city as we can.
Yeah, it'll trail with us on the agenda for time. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan spending proposals, I have received a couple of items specifically from Chief Vance uh, in regards to discussion points. So once I receive a few more, I can actually put them together and, and put them into a spreadsheet so that we can have that discussion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I have mine with me tonight. I'll send those around, but, um, just, just one. Thank you. Um, what I would like to, I, I can cover these items in a moment, but what I would like to do for process. So we are expected to get, um, in the first tranche, the first group of money, um, about 565,000 and some change. We haven't received it yet. Um, who knows when we will?
We have received the first.
Oh wait, did it just come in?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and we just received it. So, um, that must have been a fun check to handle electronically however it came in. Okay, so that's good news. Um, I would like to, um, have us, uh, discuss and decide on our list at our next council meeting. And, um, so that we can, uh, um, utilize that money rather than just having it sit around. Obviously, uh, the generator I've already mentioned is priority number one for me. Um, you'll see on the list I just sent around, uh, is a hundred dollar credit, uh, for each water account within city limits. Um, assistance to Monteceno businesses that had to close. Um, and I, right now I have on there 30 grants at 4,000, but I'm going to, what I send into the mayor pro tem will say 25 grants at 4,000 because, and based on what the police chief shared tonight on the costs for the, uh, new legislation, I think we ought to, I talked to him about maybe putting 50,000 in the first tranche and 50,000 in the second tranche in order to cover those costs. We can look at lost revenue replacement, but I think that will take some tight and deeper looking. I've got a $50,000 line item there if we can make that work. Um, and then, um, 70,000 for the city for costs for responding to COVID. Um, I think we'll have to detail some of that out. And we, you know, we could adopt these, say, in two weeks. And then if we can't spend that full 70,000, then we could see what's left and adjust that later. Um, and then the 50,000 for the police, um, I have handwritten on here. So I don't think we have to decide on the second tranche. Um, but I think it would be good for us to discuss that in two weeks as well. Just so we have an idea of what we are thinking about in a, you know, a year down the road with that second tranche of money. So that we don't feel like we're leaving something important behind. Um, it doesn't mean we have to lock in on the second tranche of 586,000. But I would like to get going. Now that the money is here, especially, we've been talking about this since at least February. And now that the number has been revised and it's been received, I think it's high time we, uh, do something with that. So I'd like to have that on as a action item for the next council meeting. Which means we all should get our email into the mayor pro tem probably by the end of this week.
That would have been, would have been nice, for sure.
I have a question.
Absolutely. Councilman Coe.
Uh, Mr. Blankus, uh, can you give us, uh, an update as where we stand on arrears at this time? As far as delinquent accounts go?
Uh, are you talking about utility bills?
Correct.
Um, so I just ran the report. We're about $50,000. Um, you know, a good portion of that is the property over on Adams Street that's had, their water leak is $3,000 a month. Their bill's over $10,000. Um, we had a property that I think it changed hands and their bill is $4,000. That's in arrears, but that's supposed to get cleaned up. And so, um, yeah, we're kind of in the $50,000 range for past due accounts. Um, but one of, there's, there's the one large account that I would guess is like 15,000 or 20,000 of that that relates to the property that has a water leak that won't repair it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the American Rescue Plan spending proposals? I would agree with Councilman Wood that the only one that I did receive was from Chief Vance and now from Councilman Wood tonight. So if you do have any suggestions or items that you would like included in that, those proposals, uh, will be brought to the table and we can have some discussion on them. Again.
I'll refine this and email it to you.
Thank you. Hearing none, we will move on to ordinances and resolution. And before you, as a resolution to surplus city property. And I, and it is resolution 978. And I would entertain a motion for that.
Remove adoption of a resolution 978 to surplus the 2,009 Dodge Charger and the 1990 International Altec Man Lift.
There is a motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Wood, a second by Councilman Scaramucca for the adoption of resolution 978 into discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, resolution 978 carries. Uh, this is our second opportunity for public comment. If there is anybody wishing to make a public comment, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to council comments. And we will start with Councilman Scaramucca. Councilman Bryson.
Councilman Wood, thanks for bringing such a detailed list tonight. I know several of us are working on it and don't have that prioritized yet. And I agree, we need to have that as soon as possible. So appreciate you getting the vote on.
Councilman Coe.
Just welcome Councilman Carl aboard. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Enjoyed our talk yesterday and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Councilman McChrystal.
I was actually going to say the same thing. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councilman.
Councilman Wood.
Same welcome. Um, I just want to let folks know that, um, a guy who grew up here in Monteceno, Jeremy Duggins, is doing his, he's almost done, um, with his ride from the Canadian to Mexican border to raise awareness, um, uh, for suicide prevention. And if folks want to contribute to that, he's trying to raise 30,000. I think he's somewhere around 16, something like that. Um, I've got a couple of, you can go to Jeremy Duggins, D U G G I N S, Facebook page or go to Monteceno Matters or probably.
1700, 1700 miles.
1700 miles. And so, yeah, um, so pretty amazing feat. Um, he's not, uh, as old as some of us here, uh, but he's not a young guy either. And so, um, so that's, uh, uh, pretty cool. And, you know, we know how much the, uh, suicide has hit Grace Harbor and Monteceno in particular. Uh, Chief Vance, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I think there are some very troubling things. Um, at some point, um, not next meeting, um, I believe we should consider a resolution urging, um, the legislature and the Association of Washington Cities and the, um, law enforcement organization to, uh, work on fixing a number of these issues. And we should line out our concerns about liability, community safety, costs, et cetera. Because I think what, in my opinion, and this is just the opinion of one person, that if you can't defund the police, then you try to defang the police. And I think this was maybe well-intended legislation by some, but it has gone way, way too far and it leaves a lot of people at risk, both our law enforcement officers and our community. And we need to speak up on it.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Carl.
I would second that, uh, Chief Vance did a fabulous job of doing his presentation. I also have some very serious concerns about these legislative, uh, actions that have been taken. Um, my fellow firefighters at the fire department are very concerned. They've always depended on the police department to assist and, uh, and mediate, um, difficult calls, especially with people with mental illness and, uh, and drug abuse issues that, uh, become violent. Uh, that, that cooperative, uh, arrangement is not going to exist under this new legislation and is very disturbing. Um, secondly, the presentation on the generator is extremely appreciated. Uh, it's timely to get that in movement. Chief Vance has done a fabulous job of stepping into, uh, the position of, uh, a public safety director, uh, temporary police chief or fire chief. And, uh, that's extremely appreciated by the staff down there.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, I would concur with the, uh, both the councilmen's comments on the legislation that it is far overreaching for what the intended purpose was. And, uh, I would join in support of any of the resolutions that would work towards a resolution, make it better. I would also say that it was a great presentation by Chief Vance and Lieutenant Wilson. And I thank them both for their, uh, for their work on that. And just so everybody is aware, the, uh, state funding for that was $16,626 that we received to try and fund about $85,000. So just keep that in the back of our minds as we move forward. Uh, reminder that National Night Out is August 3rd, next Tuesday. And if there are any communities or neighborhoods that are having anything National Night Out wise, a little block party or get together, please let the, uh, city hall know so we can make sure that's publicized and the police and fire departments can get to those respective neighborhoods. Then that, again, please get your ARP requests in so that we can have that discussion at the next council meeting. And at this time, we will move to executive session for the performance of a public employee, employee RCW 4230 110, number one, subsection G. It will be five minutes and there is no action expected. So it is 7:39. We'll be back at 7:45. That's six minutes. 7:39 and 40 seconds.
I was going to say, for the people. Yeah. I did, I did.
Oh, anyway, we don't have a staff.
No, they stopped. They stopped at seven.
I'm not. Doesn't matter.
She has, she seemed like she looked what she never, um, didn't take anything and then she was like, just.
Can you hold that down? I'll take the job.
She, uh, I was like, she was like, actually, I'm not. She said, well, I asked her, so how do you go out on these streets? She was like, um, she was like, sometimes, she was sometimes like, I didn't know how to front. We see people and things like that. Um, she was like.
So she, okay.
But she definitely helped. Okay. Yeah, I didn't say that. But I was like, oh, okay.
Austin's a nasty.
But I wanted to hold on.
They're so cute, especially when they're tiny babies. They're so adorable. Many like just running around. So.
Just what I love. Baby doll.
I do.
Yeah.
They're so cute.
I love, but they just take it with that. They deceive you when they're land. And then they turn into like really wooly cats. They look like ibos. They're really cute. They're heavy lats. And we have two. They're just our lawn mowers and our friends. Adam out there.
They do a good job with grass.
They do. We had to like kind of section them. So we like developed into more. They chew it all the way down. And then you have to let that restore.
Pretty good, right? All right, we'll come out of executive session and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
I second.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.